Planning Commission, Tuesday, December 5. Roll call. Richard Black. He's answered. Greg Malouf.
Here.
Dan Sargent.
Here.
Dan Brown. Alex Mosley.
Here.
Katie Trayhan.
Here.
Greg Robbins.
Here.
Ed Prog. Here. All right. Approval of the previous minutes?
The minutes be accepted as we approve this submitted.
Second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are adopted. Based on the agenda that we have, we're going to shuffle some things around tonight. As long as we have a public hearing call tonight, our first order of business is going to be the minor subdivision certificate amendment.
Yes. So this is a minor, this is a subdivision amendment to amend the certificate, sorry, certificate for minor plats because they want something that was showing that the planning to, that this planning staff had reviewed it and that it had met all the requirements for minor plat approvals, which is a simple two lot subdivisions without any utilities or rules or any kind of that.
More of a paper trail as you hear, huh? Discussions on this? Excuse me? Commissioners, any comments, any input?
I'm in favor of it.
All right.
We already voted to recommend.
Right. Other comments? Questions, concerns? Motion to adopt. Let's have one.
I move to adopt that this certificate has amended.
Second, please.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? Pass as unanimous. Item two that we're moving to now is the Deboz Partners rezoning from ID to C2.
I'll address this first. So last month, we had, the planning commission had recommended a rezoning from ID to C2 of a large what used to be Deboz Conference Center. But during that, since then, we have since learned that there are two small tracks that one of them, what is known as Coller Street, and the other small track between what was known as Coller Street and Deboz Street were part of Deboz that we were not previously aware of. There are property maps on Tennessee Property View or did not show it. We had to go and find through deed. There's a deed and I have attached the boundary survey that was done by Deboz Partners whenever they bought the property to show these two tracks. And then the deed that, that shows the Towne-Mon Eagle, I think it was in 1999, somewhere around there, yeah. Nine, or there anyway, had deeded this to Deboz Conference Center and that was part of the sale whenever Deboz Partners bought it from the Conference Center. They bought these two tracks along with the large tract and then I think there's a couple of tracks further up north.
Okay.
So what we're wanting to do is to rezone that from ID to C2 since it's currently zoned ID, all that's ID, just being to form this with the big tract.
So once again, a little housekeeping here. These two tracks were left out of the initial approval.
Yes.
When we change zoning, we're going to vote to change zoning on these two parcels to match the rest of the Deboz. Questions?
I have a motion. I move that we recommend the rezoning of the two parcels identified in our agenda materials from ID to C2.
Second. Second, by the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass as unanimous. Next on the agenda is the minimums we're putting for residential structures, the zoning amendment. We've been talking about this for a while, commissioners, and I think we finally got down to something that we can work with where we have established 800 square feet for resi-
Yes, for our, yeah, for, you want to change R2 and R3 from 600 to 800 while also providing a caveat for apartments condominiums to be 600.
Right.
Minimum square feet, 600. So that's what we did. We changed in the use, if you see under R2 and R3 for minimum square foot dwelling unit, those are now 800 feet. And then for, we have, letter F was added, seeing that apartments condominiums will be a minimum of 600 square feet.
Let's see if we have discussion on this. Commissioners, any questions or concerns? Comfortable with it? Community, questions, concerns, segments? All right. Motion.
I make a motion that we do move to an 800 square foot on the R2, R3 that is in proposed.
And 600 on apartments and condos.
On apartments and condos, yeah.
Right. Second, Alex. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimous. Thank you. So now we'll jump back on our schedule. Any properly presented old business that we need to address? Will we move on?
I have none.
You have none? Public commissioners, all right. The Willbury Town Home Condoment Insight Plan that is here, and there are several copies if somebody would like to see it. This is a 22 unit town home on Moffett Street behind High Point.
Is someone here who would present your presentation?
Yeah, I think so. There you go.
Okay, next one.
Hey, do we have a presenter? Can you please introduce yourself?
Hi. I'm a member of the Plaid and here from Model and Associates on the engineer of presenting the project. We also have William Vaughn, he's the developer. Like you said, this is a 22 town home units with surface property over Moffett Street. It's currently zoned R3, it's 1.41 acres. We've designed a 22 town homes with this site also having 52% open space. The town home units are going to be 12,000 square feet. Um, excuse me, 12,000 square. With public water and sewer. And we've been working closely with Mr. Roche to perfect the layout and have everything work perfectly for the town of Mon Eagle. So if you have any questions, feel free to Mr. Vaughn or add your job.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, so if you look at my memo, the main things that, you know, I reviewed using the site plan regulations does not fall under the town, town home ordinance because even though they're townhouses, they're not separate lots. It's all going to be one lot and there's going to be units that are sold as part of like the condominiums, as condominiums. So that doesn't fall under the townhouse regulations. And it fulfilled, you know, we went through the site plan regulations, it filled, you know, many of the regulations. The main thing that we were concerned about was stormwater drainage because it was unclear at times like where, where was the detention pond because, you know, where, how else the water going to flow? And I believe that she had sent in the changes showing how the water is flowing, where the detention pond is, so it's going to be a dry detention pond. I believe it's in that.
On the layout.
Yeah, on the layout, showing there. And that also making sure that it did not conflict with the landscape buffer.
So any calculations and drains and their flowages. Charles, now when this, this first approach does, this was the first block that we've seen of it, but they have since then moved ahead with their engineering drawings and submitted a complete sand set of those drawings that you have reviewed, correct?
Yes, yeah, so they-
You have reviewed, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Thank you.
And yeah, so that when Richard came in, there, it was much different layout, I would say not, not as good looking as this layout, not as well done as this layout. So they've done a really good job of trying to hear this.
I don't-
Have you satisfied yourself that the detention pond does not affect the landscape buffer?
I believe what they're based, what they said that it does not, is that the detention pond is a dry detention pond, that it will not, the, the buffer will not be on top of the detention. It will not have any issues there.
Can I ask you a question? How far away is the entrance to this development from the elementary school?
I'm not sure off the top of my head how far it is from that one.
There's a lot of school, lot of school traffic on the Moffett in the afternoon and people pretty much still at one lane of the road. But this is behind, you said behind High Point?
Right. The other side of Moffett from High Point. They have two entrances, means of egress and exit here, and they are set back significantly from Moffett Street. Looks pretty good.
And the detention pond itself will be behind the town, the townhomes in the back and there will be a landscape buffer of trees between that and any of the properties. So that, if that has any bearing.
Commissioners, further discussions?
I have, I have several questions. One about the drainage, is there one entry spot for the drainage where it's going across the parking lot where there's the drainage stream? So there's the one catch basin for the parking lot and then behind the townhomes on the side there's, there's a ditch that's going to collect the runoff from the entrance on the back. Does that answer your question? So that it looks like to me that there's like the, the main low spot is on the one corner and that pretty much the majority of the parking lot is draining to that one corner.
Yes.
And that that's, I mean, I, I don't need to be solving all, looking at and solving that problem, but that seems like a lot of water to be going to one catch basin.
We have, it's going to a 24 inch pipe, the catch, the catch basin and draining out so it will hold that flow, the water flow. I also submitted drainage calculation with the, with the supplemental to, to be sure that that will catch all the water and you won't have blood in the parking lot.
That was a, I looked over and, you know, what they, you know, I'm not an engineer, but what they were saying made sense. It was a 58 page, you know, calculation, so I didn't include it in the agenda for, you know, Moffett Street.
I mean, I'm not an engineer either. I just want to make sure that our engineer has looked at it and, you know, looked at it and thought everything was okay.
In the day, the, the site plan regulations said that they have to submit stormwater calculations and stormwater plan. It doesn't talk, it doesn't go into any further detail in terms of what it's supposed to look like. And, you know, we rely on them, you know, if the planning commission does have issues with stormwater, they, they, they're just not sure about it, then you can reserve the right to get your own engineer to look at it. But they have to certify as part of the site plan regulations. They certify, I believe on the, the stormwater plan, they're certifying on like note six saying that post-stormwater drainage runoff will not exceed pre-development stormwater drainage. So that's, that's, they're putting that, they're staying, saying that's, we're standing behind our calculations.
Once again, the acreage that's under development here was what, 1.8?
1.41.
Okay, 1.4, that's not that big a piece of river.
And the, it's hard to see that there's a park there too and that will help because it's not impervious, so the area coming off of there won't be too, too much. But we wouldn't want to design something that's going to flood. We wouldn't want to ruin our relationship with Mon Eagle.
Of course not. I mean, no matter what-
But that's, you're not wanting to design something that's going to flood. Hopefully.
Further questions, discussions, mayor?
This is, this will be one contiguous building, or continuous building? Will there be any breaks between the units or is it all firewalls?
They're open.
No, they're, I mean, these are all-
Just pick one.
Those are all firewalls?
I haven't checked with, yes.
Yeah, that's, that has come up before in other projects.
All right. Public comments, yes?
Two questions. Where the stormwater drains, the pipe, and you probably don't know this, I'm asking the rest of you, that pipe, where does that pipe go and where does it drain?
I could answer that.
Oh, you can?
So in the detention pond that we designed, we have three drilled, they're called injection wells. So the water is going to go, there's going to be no runoff from the site. It's going to go through the injection wells, back, back down past the groundwater. So there won't be a runoff.
So you're saying it's going to get absorbed right there?
Yeah, yes.
They have a significant dry detention pond on your drawings?
Yes, so it, it won't, it won't, it won't be instant, immediate that it goes into the injection wells. It's going to be held into the pond and discharged slowly through, through the injection wells back underground so that there's no runoff.
Okay, I just know we're on Rocky Top, so there's a lot of rock, right?
Yeah.
Below all of us, so-
Which is, which is why we're able to do those injection wells because of the rock, so there's a lot of void and we can drill right down with no issues.
My, my second question is the, what you were talking about, mayor, the, between each of the units, is it going to be solid or is it going to be, we lived in condo and found out that the retention wall was just a thick flame retardant that had been torn down when some workers were doing stuff and never put back up. So how easy will it be for workers to tear down those?
I would, I would have to address that question to William. I'm not quite sure about the architecture of the plans.
There's firewalls, it's a five, five eighth inch, you know, gypsum board between the walls. You have to have walls from both sides and you have gypsum board between it all the way to the third.
So there will be walls, not just-
Further questions? Yes?
Just quickly, is this going to be an approval vote tonight on this?
Yes, we hope so.
That's, I just want to make sure that there was a, the kind of condition that, that if the injection wells don't get approved by TDEC, that we have to come back to the drawing board and maybe reapprove a new drainage system for this. So it should be kind of conditional upon getting TDEC's approval for the injection wells. I know they're, they get a little funny about injection wells this close to bedrock sometimes, so I hope it works out. It's a good design. I just, I want to make sure that the commissioners know that this should be conditional upon that approval.
Yes, we, we need to, we have bold plans to proceed once we get the approval from you to get the classified injection well. There may require for TDEC to have injection well.
Travis question for you, buddy. Is that in your bailiwick to inspect these?
Yeah, it is, and I was actually going to, I'm trying to reference it. I think it's under 319. It's called dwelling unit separation under the IBC and IRC. And, I mean, these will be fire rated walls and be held as standard in the code.
Thank you. Further comments, discussions?
I have a question about the, the flow with the driving, yes. Has, Travis, have you looked at that and is a, I'm guessing that all of you have looked at it, that, that a fire truck can get around in there and make that radius?
Yeah. It's, it's a, it's one way, but the, the lane is 24 feet wide, the center lane, so a fire truck can turn and there's two entrance, well, there's one entrance and one entrance because it's one way that a fire truck can make a complete turn in there. Okay? Um, I, I can't tell from looking at the drawing, so that's why I- I can do, I can send you guys a page. If I have a program, I can drive the truck through and I can send that, send it to you guys and people like that, just to show that it can fit if that was.
As long as you've got the calculations and that Travis has looked at it and is comfortable with it, then I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that we're meeting, you know, those requirements and that the safety is, is there. Okay, I can-
If I may, I think it's safe to say Travis and I have discussed this. If there is a fire, they're going to enter the closest entrance to the fire, and I hope there never is one. But I think we have turning radius and sufficiency for a fire truck to get in. Is that correct?
Yes, a lot of time for mayor upon other projects and still, so that the minimum requirements, the requirements is what, but on access for, for fire, I think this project may-
And my, my other question is about ADA parking, yes. And I only saw one parking spot and from what I looked up on the parking requirements, there would need to be two.
I believe it's one per, one large van parking space per 50 spaces.
Okay.
This is under 50 if I, I believe that's what I was thinking.
Total number of parking?
Uh, 46.
Two.
Two?
One thing accessible and one regular space. Not that much. It's for 26 to 27.
42? Oh, yes. Yeah.
And I might be looking at something that's a different date or something, but I saw 26 to 50.
Yeah, Chad was it up, yeah. It's two, so is it two, one van, one regular? So, yeah, they would just have to change one of these to a, which can be that, which you probably just leave the one right next to it or, so you still have the same, that still, that way.
I love that one, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Further comments, discussions?
Can we go back to the detention pond just for a second, please? I know we're talking about the injection well, but is there an estimated time for evaporation for the pond for, this is saying we have a three inch range of very short window. It appears to me you're going to have a lot of bit of water standing within feet of a couple of these buildings. Am I looking at that right?
I don't have the exact calculation in front of me, but it's, it's never going to come to the top of that, of that highest pond where I believe it's at 119. So I don't have the times that it's going, that it's going to take to drain, but there's not, it's not going to be full. We tested it for up to the 25 year storm and it doesn't overflow.
What would you estimate the distance from the center of that pond to the back of the, the building on the, I guess that would be the south side? 15? That'd be my. Now they do have a gradient across your parking area that drops four feet from 26 to 22, and then they drop another four foot from that parking area to the entry down there. So there's eight foot drop from the high point on the side to the bottom of the retention basin. They've got a pretty good flow there. I guess one of you want my comment, as close as that is to the back of that building and if there's four feet of water there, and I don't want to hypothetically throw this out there, what happens when you've got kids leaving five feet to a building, falling down a cliff, a poth? And it goes across the entire length of the building?
It is about 15 feet away. The, the pond isn't four feet deep, it's only three feet deep.
Okay. I'm having a hard time seeing it around me.
It's difficult. I can, if you don't mind, let him off the bigger one over there.
Okay, that's fine.
It's hard, it's hard to see, but this is the ditch coming around here and it looks like it was all part of the pond, but this is just greater than the pond. And then this, this is-
The dark one, is it?
Yeah, so it is in 1940, we changed it.
Okay.
It is four feet.
So it don't start at 1922?
No, it does not start there, it doesn't start until here. But we just had to get it back, get our degree back there.
Okay, very good, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
And then one last question I was going to ask, if you could kind of talk through the committee as well as our constituents here about what these things are going to look like, finished product, facade, rules. Is there someone here could speak on that behalf?
Yes. Did you like that?
The mix of the outside look of the building will be brick, siding, stone, a mixture of, you know, just all of them the same. But every third or fourth, I won't be exact.
Single story or two story structure?
I'm sorry?
Single or two story structure?
Two story, yes.
Two story, okay.
The way it's designed, there's 600 square feet on each floor, which you have siding, stone, brick. Just gives a nice look, just, just mundane.
Do you have a lot of type of roofing materials you've got?
Asphalt, it'll be, be all asphalt. Two thirty, you know, settle down, have a roof.
And how many are there?
There's 22 units. Three buildings, two buildings got seven units, one building's got eight units.
Yes.
What's the zoning behind that?
Appears R3, that's the plans that they had submitted.
R3.
Further comments?
I have another question about, about the ADA. I'm sorry about this, but I'm just wondering where are the ramps to get to the buildings? Because I see the ramp to get from the parking up onto the sidewalk, but then I don't know how you get from that sidewalk on that middle part to get to any of the buildings.
I think we're only required to have the ADA ramp at the mail access.
Okay.
At point.
But they don't need to get to any of the actual townhomes?
It's not sounding right coming out of my mouth while I'm saying it, so I have to look at that. We didn't, I can add in an ADA accessible sidewalk from the parking lot over, but yeah, no, typically we just put it by the mail center.
Okay. I mean, it just, to me, it seems like they need to be able to get to each building. I'm not, I don't know ADA rules, I'm just saying from a common sense perspective, to me, that's what I would think.
Will the entrances to the buildings be on the same grade as the sidewalk?
Under design criteria, do you have the same ADA requirements on residential that you do commercial?
I don't believe so because if you don't-
I think they're different.
Commercial, you're, you know, you can't choose the customer that you're selling it to. I'm not sure if they do different markets, so.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I don't believe it's the same as commercial.
And this does connect to sewer, it does head city water, right? Okay. Further comments, commissioners, public? Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion that the commission approved the site plan for Willbury's Town Home Condoments as submitted on the following conditions. That the applicant secure and report to the town that it has TDEC approval for the drainage system and that it revises drawings to ensure compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, which I think everybody here now knows is going to require an additional parking space and may require ramps associated with the sidewalks. And certify that to us.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass as unanimous. Thank you, we appreciate it. We're down to any new business that we need to discuss. We're down to any new business that we need to discuss, we're being like, y'all isn't business. Oh, it'd be a good time to ask, given.
Grant's good.
Alright. Persons having business, persons having business in front of us this evening? I'm waiting for a motion. Second? All in favor? All opposed? Being adjourned, next meeting, January 2nd.
It's a Christmas.
24.